Called a order at 7:00. Roll call. Steve Vitale?
Here.
Marion Frigio-Lions?
Here.
Tracy Benkovsky, present. Janine Razik?
Present.
Kyla Kappa?
Present.
Ryan Neeson?
Present.
And Robert Canales, AR711. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at 7:01. Public hearing, rezoning request for parcel 0633202017, 31071 Division, petitioner request to rezone from residential office to light industrial. Do we need more? Any starting?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any...where do we want to start? Do you want to start with comments on the floor, Jeff? Or do you want to do a general introduction?
Why do you general introduction? The petitioner...I'm sorry, the petitioner of the property on Division Street, the former Green Rain property, I think as it's commonly known as, has a...presently has a non-conforming Class A designation for this property, recognizing that it is an industrial property that's been operating such long for zoning in the village. The current zoning of the property is residential office. The property is immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks. It has been industrial for some time. Just kind of paraphrasing from my review, it's very unlikely that the type of development that we're looking at residential office would occur on that site, being the constraints that you're so close to the railroad tracks. I mean, that's a regional border, or as you guys know, there's a lot of traffic through the line and all. And also, due to the long history of the site, there's probably environmental constraints there that need to be explored before we ever have residential development. And I would gather that the cost associated with doing such a prohibited property would dissuade anybody from making that type of investment in that property long-range looking in the future. So with that, we're looking at, as the planning staff offered no objections as to the request for the reason.
Comments? State your name, address. Thank you.
Chris, all respect to the owner of the property in mention. I have been working with Jeff since we bought the property from him about six years ago, and I think Steve Cassman is a supplier. We did come in at one time with non-conform use as recommended by Steve and Jeff at the time. It works for us right now. With the light industrial, we'll open things up. We originally bought the property to use as a construction area for ourselves, which later found out was a hard job. We do utilize probably a third of the property for storage. Small saws and doors and things that we can use the barns inside now. The other parts of the barns are used in real estate. I store some furniture in it. Ron, the owner of the parts, he dismantles saw vehicles. He buys them from around the United States. President dismantles them, the DMV stores of parts. So then one of the barns, he has really nice setup of parts. He keeps tracking everything, and then he sells it online. It's not a lot of retail. They do have a few locals that come in there to have their cars worked out and whatnot, what he's capable of. But most of his business is online. Part of the reason why to get the light industrial zoning is Ron needs to have a contract signed that effectively actually states that it's for used car lot. Am I correct, Jeff?
I think so. When you're dealing with the state licensing for auto of sales, I think it's salvaged, just more like a salvaged type of licensing. It's easier to claim the parts.
To sell parts, he's looking for like a used car lot license. And as of right now, that can be signed by the president and no other person with the city. I'm not exactly sure if it's the planner or the...
I think it's the clerk.
The clerk. President and clerk. They have called off on signing it, wanting to get the board's opinions and not burning the bridges or whatever, because they don't have time to develop the district. Not only has the property got some environmental issues where the banks won't touch it for future development, but it already has all the barns and structures on it as a light industrial use. It's...they have no plans in doing any big stamping plants or heavy industrial. We just want to use the property for as it's been used in the past. We came in, I believe, last week asking for light industrial use on the front piece that we also own, the corner of Haven's Ridge and Maggie. And they...for not sure why, but they gave us a non-conforming approval, like we have in the back, attached with light use verbiages so we can use the property for anything that's zoned under the light industrial. So in the long run of the future, it'd be nice to see the parcels that are attached outside of the residential houses just zoned correctly with the light industrial use. I think that would give Mr. Hoffner or Hoffman the right zoning, which is under the residential business right now, which that building is never going to be an office building unless somebody tears it down. And I think by looking at it at one time, it might be a gas station. Somebody with more into Haven history than myself might know that. I get a lot of smiles, but you know, I'm not sure. It looks like it was a gas station at one time. So we're basically just asking to clean that corner up. As anybody has seen, we've dumped a couple hundred thousand dollars in the corner since we've owned it. We bought the properties that have come for sale next to us, which had our idea as just a smart move. And we've done an approach with Mr. Hoffner or Hoffman, whether or not we want to buy his property. Want to get through our own issues before I expand any further and dump any more money and do it like. We did hire out properties to lease the corner building to see what kind of activity we would be getting. And met with some of the people from New Haven. We had a very nice meeting. And you know, some of them were talking about, oh, it'd be nice to have a coffee shop, office building. They even made mention of like a senior housing development, which is going somewhere else in the community, I'm not sure. As we were talking, the trailer behind and all kinds of things. You know, you're right, you're asking for the right zoning. Nobody's going to want to live on this corner or have an office. So that's worth remembering. Appreciate all your help in getting this done.
Anyone else?
Happy anytime, I'm Victoria Clark. And I'm right there at the railroad track. You were a little dismissive there. But I really don't have any concerns. My big concern is chemicals and any type of stuff like that. You know, it's cleaned up the place, you know, you guys have done a good job. I just, you know, have those minor concerns that, you know, because I still am here. And there are, I got a bag of foxes in here too. We might see them sometime, but...
We might go to the rats.
Yeah. We'll take care of those. So that's all I'm saying. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gray?
Hi.
Hi.
I was thinking of to you, Jeff. I was, well, two weeks ago, I think, I was with the zoning board appeal. And I'm representing now the property immediately across the track, the whole railroad station. And we really don't have any objection to the proposed rezoning. However, the question really is to...has to do with your intentions and not so much as intention, because he's a normal old property, but it came up as a pretty interesting discussion during his zoning board appeal meeting regarding what the planning commission's intentions are, was very true, not just this one district and the one that we dealt with that night, but that entire area because from a long-term planning standpoint, they...it seemed that the whole thing should be consistently zoned to light industrial being as prevalent as the railroad and what's already been proved there and the uses that are already made of property that's there. The...it's kind of a question, maybe we can get into it when they're done the opening reportedly later. But I'd like to see some discussion on what the plans would be toward rezoning that whole area because the long-term will been, I guess, real...any real development there. Would...would depend upon how that whole area is rezoned. And from my standpoint, when Mr. Frost did vote, didn't have an objection. But we'd like to see whatever goes there, that goes to whatever they can to make sure that is developed in such a way that whatever goes there is successful, helping as much as you can. Because the property, the way that it's all shopped up here now would hardly meet any size, side yard, setback conditions because of the sizes and shapes and that of the property. It'd be real hard, so it'd be constant before the zoning board appeal, looking for bearings for this and that needed. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add to Mr. Gray's comment. When we did meet with Jeff and his team at the county, there was discussion of letting the planning commission present this on its own, which would include our elevator property, the 58400, which is the corner property, Mr. Hoffman's property, the house in between Mr. Hoffman and I believe the city owns a corner, they're kind of doing a fire station at one time there, and then leaving the residential houses on Division alone. That little corner of land, I think, would be best used as light industrial so that if anybody did purchase it in the future, they could get away from some of the hard setbacks and the zoning requirements rather than having that corner excuse. I think we approached it by ourselves because, as Mr. Schrader said, it might save us some time and happen a little quicker or get answered a little quicker. We approached it privately rather than having to New Haven try to configure everything together on its own. So we were just trying to get the ball around. The other thing that we did there is when we first bought the elevator property, we were asked, there's more different faces or many different faces than I approached five or six years ago. They did ask us to keep the silos in the front building as long as it was safe. And if you notice, we did start re-siding and re-roofing those buildings to somewhat say this, that, so that for the picture takers or for the district of New Haven. And we're continuing to do so at this point.
Anyone else? Alright, motion to close the public hearing at 7:14. So...all in favor?
Aye.
Close at 7:14. Moving on to a approval of agenda.
Motion that we approve the...
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments on agenda items? Approval of the minutes, August 7th, 2018. Did everyone get a chance to get through those? Any motion to that?
Motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the I71.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no course...anybody communications correspondent? Okay, action item from our public hearing, rezoning request for parcel 0633202017, 31071 Division, petitioner request to rezone from residential office to light industrial. So you're putting that motion on table? No, I'm just looking for comments discussion. Oh, yeah.
Motion that we approve the rezoning request for parcel number 06 hyphen 33 hyphen 202 hyphen 017, also known as 31071 Division, from residential office to light industrial.
Discussion? All in favor?
It's a discussion.
Just put any...
First we have that discussion.
So that's not exactly nice to say, how you have a lot of jokes. Was it in your name or second?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any comments that you'd like to make?
That's fair. So my two cents, just responding to some of the comments before. I would agree that some of the zoning in downtown area doesn't make sense to cast a brush over and make big broad decisions. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think we should look at these properties individually as they're brought to us. As a commission, we've got other stuff we're trying to tackle. I think zoning in particular is probably top of our list at the moment. In fact, some of the ordinances and stuff that we're reviewing may influence zoning changes in the future. So I think we should, if we give these requests, we should consider it individually as opposed to broad brushing big areas, activities that let her understand what we're going to call our ordinances and whatnot. This particular property, I think the light industrial fits it, considering the existing structures and the location in the area. I don't think it's fair to say that the railroad tracks really does... railroad tracks makes it perfect light industrial because we have tons of residential solely north of 27th and 28th. There are no tracks. I guess that doesn't really make sense either, but it's a plus I have in mind, I guess. And I would...the property all across the street from it is already zoned light industrial on the other side of Victoria, both sides of tracks, with the exception of a few small pockets of residential. Other side of tracks is all light industrial. So we're not picking on a random parcel in the middle of a residential area changing yet. So I would say I'd mostly favor it at this point.
Great.
I echo Kyle's sentiments. Looking at the zoning map and what we already have established, seeing that there is light industrial on the other side of the tracks on Victoria Street, it seems like it makes sense.
I would agree. The only concern I would have is, you used a good example of you have a tenant that needs a specific license to operate the... it's a used car license, correct? But that's not really what he's doing. But my only concern would be, that's the tenant today. The tenant from a year from now. Do we want a used car lot there? That would be my concern.
License is associated with it, that's right.
I understand that, but once you make it light industrial...
Alright, it's an open and up talk. We have to consider what else could fall correct with this one here.
Used car lots are all special, like special to use. Right. So they would all come, they would all have any... that use would have coming forward this month.
Right. But if we...I appreciate that, but once you do something, you set a precedence. So that would get granted to your tenant, correct? Because it would apply for that license through them. So that would be my only concern.
With all respect, seriously, we're not looking at the license, business license. We're looking at the zoning specifically.
I agree with you, but you have to understand that all the businesses that you can have under that light industrial. I support what they're doing. I just, to be devil's advocate for a second, 2000, leave it all at that.
Of all the light industrial options, I would say the used car lot is the least... one of my worries.
I understand that, and I agree with what you're saying. I understand that we make a decision today that has a lot of longevity to it, and we have to be confident in that decision. That's all I'm saying.
That's right.
From that saying, I don't support it.
No, I agree with you.
I just think about this also.
Yeah, I agree with Tracy on the longevity of it. While appreciating what's going on there today, you know, there...we have no restrictions going forward as to what goes in with that.
Right.
And like, as you said, you know, there's a light...a used car lot sounds good right now, but what are the ones that are your concerns?
There's actually a lot of restrictions going forward there because if they change anything, it has to fit into our current zoning ordinances. And like Mr. Gray mentioned, there doesn't have much space there. It's kind of a shit lot.
Right.
So they're going to be...it's really difficult to change those buildings around as is.
Right.
You know, but my assumption that if they can make those buildings work as is and get a use for it, that's great because I don't see a whole lot of... if you can do with that narrow strip there with, you know, a little street front edge. So if you were to knock those buildings down and build something there, I mean, it could be a really small building.
Right.
Based on current setbacks included. So they're really limited use. Maybe industrial storage units in there or something down the road or...
Could I ask a question to you, Ms. Jones Beck?
Sure.
You mentioned the licensing and this opens up that option. Does this open up any other opportunities? What other opportunities does this open up for you?
I think Kyle, given all of that, say that there's not a lot of opportunities available with properties to help.
Right.
You have one nice part of it, Ron leases out. And I think is dismantling the vehicles and some of the parts. Works out well. It seems that I called the neighbors and liked them. I was just over there grinning a lot with my son, and the neighbor walked over and asked me if I would do his backyard a little bit because I had a crater out. Introduced himself, so as far as the neighbors, we're all getting along pretty well. But if we tear down the buildings, first you'd be financing for all that, which we bought it on a contract with the DeMell family because the bank won't touch the property. They didn't test the property for any contaminants, but we have a problem with that piece, and we have a problem with 58400 because the founder is across the street or was across the street. So they don't even want to do a face study or anything out of it. They just say no. And my credit is pretty darn good for a fourth generation business. Made it through all the bad times in the late 2000s. So we're still fairly strong. And as long as we're going to keep the buildings, which I did tell New Haven we would keep the silos up and the front buildings as long as they're safe. And that safe moment is every time I touch something, somebody asks me why I'm not turning it down. We will be back in to ask for permission to utilize the front building, which we're working on now. But we've got to make it watertight and able to occupy for some use. I don't see the property, if anything... I would agree that if you could get somebody in there that had a used car lot, that would not be horrible to use because then you could possibly tear down those back buildings. But those back buildings are generating income right now. We have a tenant in there, Mr. Hillis or Hills, that just stores trinkets from their made-of-flea market, I believe. And I don't want to call any as a harmful joke because it's all treasures to him. But he pays us right every month, and he's there every Friday pulling stuff out and bringing it back on Monday. So the use of the property is kind of limited unless somebody went in there to tore down the buildings. At that point, the setbacks are going to...the setbacks in the financing. So buildings really got to be utilized for what they are.
You say the front building, you mean the...at the old store, like grain store building on the other side of the...fosters of the railroad tracks? The building right on the front side of the property?
Yeah, it looks like a little house with the silos right behind it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I very forget it is the homecoming picture place.
Right.
That's good. That's accurate.
If you went by there now, you would see that we put some siding up on the side and we put in new garage cars on it. The only difference that we're finding is it might end up to be vinyl rather than wood just because of the decay of the existing structure. And the inside of it is all fallible and there's not... there's no flat floor inside. It might look like a conter. There's no bathroom, no floor. It's basically useless like this.
Anybody else?
Just one comment before we call. I just want to acknowledge that we do appreciate the vast hearing community. So thank you.
So we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, we have support, so we'll do the roll call.
Here, well, let's repeat that. So rezoning request for parcel 0633202017, 31071 Division, requesting to rezone from residential office to light industrial. Is the motion on the table to permit it? Ryan Neeson?
Yes.
Marion Frigio-Lions?
Yes.
Tracy Benkovsky?
Yes.
Kyla Kappa?
Yes.
Steve Vitale?
Yes.
And Janine Razik?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, so you are good.
Thank you very much for your...
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
It turns out it's really exciting to thank you. This is not just about somebody, you're the rat.
Alright, matters of consideration, old business. The development guidebook, we all got a bunch of emails, lots of updates and stuff. So we're at the developmental guidebook final draft.
I've got a copy for everybody to take along with me. There really is not much to say about this other than it was a lot of table of contents and page numbering and making sure everything lined up. But I think we're at a final draft of the document. I would never say this can be a final of this because it really is designed to be a living document that has rules and regulations related to development and zoning change within the community. We're hoping that we'll be able to give a copy that's the local department that they'll be able to make those changes as they come. So our engineer who's not here tonight did also receive a final copy. I've asked him to make any final comments to see if we missed anything along this portion of what he does the reviews about. But I think that we have a document now that currently reflects all the amendments that have been made to the zoning right now. It does not anticipate anything related to signs or anything. We talked about that. So this would be current. This would be current by today's standards to be actually started using. And we would encourage them to do so. Because they have to help answer lots of questions that come by. So I don't hope that there's really any action required of this of you guys other than I just finally accept it. Or with it, but again, if you find, if you find any errors or any revisions, let us know, we'll make those changes. Then I will report it to get this into a word document so that she has something that can be held onto that community changes may be necessary, we can pass it back to the council and change something.
This is going to go on the website?
Yeah, it also exists in PDF format, which I think I distributed to you guys.
Yep.
So that will be available to go to the website as well.
Yeah, I have to say, this is absolutely great. I think this is going to...it's really going to help the village. As an update from council, previous council meeting, we did approve of the administrative updates. But as I think I mentioned in one of the previous planning meeting, while we did approve the amendment, we won't be publishing it until we wrap up the entire zoning ordinance. So technically, right now, this is going to fully...
It's true.
It's true.
It's true.
But we're only talking, you can talk about one.
We did leave the U H O...
That's fair, that doesn't have a document.
Yes, and that's, I guess that's an update to that. Um, there's quite some discussion, uh, is, uh, I think that's how, is my hope.
Okay, so, um, a motion to accept this? Do you want an action or do you...
No, we don't, we can, we can just move out of this.
Just, all right. Signed ordinance review status and other admissions.
Okay, in terms of the signed ordinance review, as we've been talking, there's, we have these, some of these issues in terms of how they can resolve. We waited to see the action that City Unit was taking, so look like they were in the direction of investments in line into their attorneys to actually dive into this and, uh, and try to come up with something. They elected at their last council meeting to take. But I would recommend that we could, we need to do the same and move on to other elements and ordinance. Our book each year has some discretionary dollars that we try to invest back into community plan uh, through a community, for our partners, uh, through, through a number of different, uh, things that we do. But one of the things we did this year is we engaged a consulting firm to help us write a new model industrial that could be rolled out into communities. Because we looked at it from an economic development standpoint, we have 27 communities in the county. Each of them have their own industrial zoning command, four or five different things. And basically, everyone's asking for the same thing in 20 different ways. And it makes it very difficult for someone who's coming in competitively to look at it and do reviews and figure out which is the easiest, working through the process quickest. Long story short, is we've, we've made some investments to put model ordinance together that could serve as a template for our communities to draw on if they want to update their industrial zone. Recognizing that we did that, what we're looking to do on trying to convince powers that we do is to take down science for all the communities. And for the county to make that investment, we can potentially bring in the legal expertise that we need and then come back for all the communities with a document that will be hopefully guided by, as I think, guide us how to make the best decisions. Because right now, I wouldn't say that anybody that I can say is out there wishing at a point will say there's such a matter of expert on this just because it's such a good thing. And, and, and as far as getting logged down, trying to figure it out ourselves, I think we should just move on to another portion of the ordinance, because we do have a timeframe. And with that, as you guys were talking about the zoning, well, one of the other things of the timeframe, looking at the master plan, we have a five-year master plan with the community. At the end of 2019, we'll be, we'll close out with that five-year plan. So within the next year, we have an opportunity to create a team down there and work on all of the zoning areas. Not necessarily out, we're doing, we're doing the mechanics today with the zoning. We're taking a look at these districts and see if that makes sense. See if the vision for downtown that was really forming almost 20 years ago, because we just had a copy and pulled it forward, because that was the design of the last planning permission we did the plan, that still makes sense for the community. You know, maybe, maybe we want to look at it in a different manner and change up some of the zoning groups. There are some things I think that make sense, just this one area here. Because even in looking at it as its own residential office, our residential office says we have to have a minimum frontage of 100 feet. I can't say there's a lot, any current that corner that would fit, everything's in there. I mean, we have a really odd shaped piece of property. There might be some better ways of dealing with that, like maybe zoning each use, district where people, where we, we put a set of uses that we can go in there and, and work with them to actually build that as opposed to just hard coding it as light industrial. We don't necessarily have those things in the, in the zoning ordinance today. Those will go to the master plan in the future, that'll be something we'll consider. But that being said, I guess, um, in terms of where we go next, um, I think we want to look at the community ordinance. Um, my staff's been looking at the planning and development ordinance for Bucata. Um, they're in the process of changing theirs, we've had a couple other communities that are. So I think we need to look at ours and come back with you guys some suggestions or recommendations for next month. I will, we'll try to, try to get those out to you before the meeting, like, for the month, so that we can actually maybe engage in some kind of discussion. Because there's some potential development opportunities that may be coming to the village that could benefit from those types of changes. So right now, I think with a planning and a development, we have a minimum acreage of five acres, um, or twice, or it's 20 acres. Um, and something around five acres may make more sense, looking at the available properties that we have left that can be a large enough for, for a large scale. So with that, I think P, we'll look at PUD. What I'm also looking through with my staff is the schedule of regulations. Like I just mentioned, we have 100 square, we need 100 feet of frontage residential office. That doesn't make sense, we don't have. Our heavy industrial is written right now, it would need 300 feet of frontage. And I think of maybe one property on 26 that will completely meet that without having to start assembling properties. So we have a lot of, like, we have a lot of heavy use, industrial uses that are already existing that basically don't meet those requirements. So we may want, we may want to scale those back to make them fit the community better. So we'll make some recommendations on those.
One thing I'd like to bring up, um, I talked to our attorney, uh, last month's council meeting.
Yes.
And he actually did say that giving a legal opinion is no cost to the village. So if we did, if, if the pleasure of the planning committee was to get a legal opinion from at least our attorney, maybe that's... I, I like the idea overall of the county coming forth with something that says, you know, we've all, based off of all the research and legal experts and everything like that, but, um, you know, if our attorney is able to do it for free, um, well, not for free, but at part of what we're already paying our attorney to handle, you know, I can bring it to council, the next council meeting, and ask for council approval to have the attorney give a legal opinion on sign. It's just something that we could then have in our back pocket.
That, that would definitely expedite it if we don't move us forward in terms of those sort of ordinance review. But I would say anything, again, anything that the county put out, we would definitely have the cap. We wouldn't want any community to let us through their council, just make sure that it fits. Because as we do a model ordinance, it's, it's guidance, it's definitely not one set that's all. But I think once we get into the science stuff, I think there's going to be a lot of commonalities that everyone's going to have to follow. So, but that would be fantastic if some of, I guess the more eyes and more opinions we can get at this point.
The pleasure of spending all of it to council? Yeah?
Okay, are we good on the signed ordinance, such?
I guess so.
Okay, uh, ordinance review districts? Do you want to go?
I, I guess that's what I was saying, we'll go with, we'll, we'll, we'll look, we'll look at the PUD district and that. I guess I was looking at those items for that.
Okay, and you know, we've got the... So matters for, new business matters for discussion. Planner report, we have...
We have to give that.
It was...
Right, but he, he...
Yes, okay. Okay, so, uh, planner's report.
Planner's report, okay. Uh, I've got a couple things here. Uh, these are more just kind of update, very informational pieces. Um, from Com County, our department is currently in the process of updating the county's parks and rent plan. I sent everybody a link to, uh, the website. There is a survey, we're trying to get as much publicity put on that. So if you guys have the time to take, uh, take the survey, we'd greatly appreciate it. Was contacted by a gentleman, um, from Shoreline Steel. Um, they're interested in a property at 58-201 Main Street. That is a small gray house that is at the east side of the entrance to their property. Uh, they indicated that they were looking at, uh, doing a demo of that home and building a new office building for Shoreline. Uh, we're looking, we should be expecting a site plan or something like that coming through in the future from them. We're also contacted by an engineering firm who's working on the remodeling of the garage at BP Gas Station. Um, there is a Dunkin' Donuts that's looking to locate there. I guess it was a form of an M P sub, and then there's a drive-through, which I was not aware of, that, that was set up as a drive-through. Um, we have, Dave and I have a pre-application development meeting tomorrow at 1:00 with those folks here with the village. I was contacted by a gentleman named Michael Steiner. Uh, he's a firm called Cash Wagner Associates. Um, they are an engineering and architectural firm who was asking questions about the 15-acre site that's out on Triangle. That's the largest of the three properties that make up the Triangle. Um, and asking about multifamily residential building out there. They were looking, I believe, apartment-style buildings, 36-minute buildings, three stories, 12 minutes to a building. He was just asking preliminary questions about the rezoning process and that would be something that the community would be interested in. So he needs to commit and ask. Uh, then lastly, um, tomorrow, I knew at the request of Chris Tilburg, have a meeting with, with Chris and Joe Ballard regarding the 26 and Roseell property that's now remaining ice or on the corner, we're going to hire some that store. We're going to be talking to him about, um, how to make, how to do a proper site plan and what we can do to under the zoning and what's required of the site to operate, that type of business, so we're trying to help him. So we're asking him how we're going to basically, uh, basically tell him what he wants to do with the community. That's what I, oh, this is another, one other item, and I thought it was interesting. Um, it just kind of came from our economic development team and then it bounced back to Chris, to me. There is a company, and I don't have the name of the company, but they're one of the largest in the country that sets up solar farms. They're partnering with DTE Energy. Um, and they are looking to, this area here, they're looking to do two solar farms, a 10-acre, something around the size of 10 acres and something around the size of 50 acres. Uh, the reason they're interested in the area here is because over Place Road and 26, there's a sub, an ITC substation that's a ideal place for them to put their power back on the grid where they would basically sell. Um, they are partnering with DTE. Uh, if you ever driven along High 69 on your way to Flint, on the north side of Oak, you see a solar farm. They're the company, that's more largest ones in Michigan, they're, they're a company that's responsible for that. So I, they, from what I understand, their approach in my ex- township in the letter, and that didn't get any response from them. So then they came to the village, asking if there were any property that they're, they're interested in. It gives them to do a, of this type of a long-term research and, and smaller ones. So that needs coming up at the new government to, for the county to have a look. That's all I have, but some interesting different things.
I'm trying to think if this is the last one for us? Okay, so public comments on non-essential items. Mr. Nivel.
Public script.
I don't like it.
Good evening. Um, just to, thinking back on Jeff was talking, there's a couple weeks coming up on some of the issues that we... Coming out of this rate, I think, I think the solar company is coming up, uh, 15th, 15th of this month. And, because I just want to hear what they have to say. What's in it for the village? It must pay back. So that's one of those conversations we're having, and we touched on the, the potential developer for the Triangle. And some of the other things that are happening, um, this thing they're having. But, you know, we're not happy until they actually happen. And right now, we get a lot of puff, you know, but, and these people are looking and, and starting to take a look at us. We just gotta make sure we continue working and attract that rate of order. I think that first of all, for the next move, we'll open the doors for a lot of our... But I just have to sit in the back and see what you guys are working on as far as the signed ordinance and all the other zoning issues and whatnot. I think we all agree they're long overdue, they're, we have a lag as to the size of the village. I think Jeff touched on heavy industrial, 300-foot frontage, just can't find it. It just doesn't exist, so, you know, just keep doing what you're doing, and I appreciate it, and I think together we're gonna get there.
Thank you. And then, do you have any comments on the table, anybody? Anybody? Anybody else before? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn at 7:47? All in favor?